Now I'm ready. Yes, and just a reminder for all of you, make sure your mic is turned on so Mr. Jonathan can hear you on the Zoom call. If you don't have your mic on, he won't be able to hear what you say. So with that being said, we're gonna go through roll call, Mr. Commissioner Chisholm.
Attendant.
Commissioner Bixler.
Present.
Commissioner Matt, uh, I'm just reading the council name, Commissioner Green.
Present.
And Commissioner Paulson.
Present.
All right, and our acting chairman today, Commissioner Eskridge. Green light is on.
Okay, present.
There we can hear you, all right.
Okay, Will, let's do the pledge of allegiance, all stands.
To the flag of the United States of America, we are the Republicans, which stands, from nation, under God.
I, I will try to do things as, as close to what Jonathan does as, as possible. I'm substituting for, for him, and I'll try to hold my standards up to your standards, Jonathan.
Okay.
Go through everything, and once we get to the open session, anyone who would like to speak, well, allow them to come up here and speak. We'd like you to hold your comments to three minutes, but we would welcome everyone that's here, both of you. Okay, uh, just before we go into the minutes, I will not be voting on the minutes since I was not at the last meeting. So, uh, do I hear a motion on, on the minutes from last meeting? Do I hear a second? Okay, the motion by Dan, excuse me, the motion by Kevin Green to approve, and second by Dan Chisholm. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, we, it is unanimous. Minutes will be approved. We don't have any old business, I don't think, do we, David?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go directly into our new business, which is Rocket PC dash two, two oh two four, S O one dash T A. Text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding temporary use regulations. And I'll ask for your.
All right, let me go ahead and introduce this item. So, a little background on this draft ordinance you have before you tonight. And this draft ordinance pertains to temporary uses, temporary events, food trucks. And so in recent months and years, staff and even some of our city leaders have received a lot of comments about the challenges that they seemingly face when they're trying to hold events and, and operate a food truck. So staff's been asked to take a look at what our ordinances are and, and consider if there's any updates that might be recommended to make it a little easier to have events and do food trucks in the city. This was discussed by the building code Standing Committee of City Council back in November, and they provided a little bit of input and direction to staff at that time. The way our current standards work for events is that any event, well, most events in the city you have to get a permit for. There are a few exceptions, if it's a city-sponsored event, if it's a non-commercial fundraising event, if it's a private, non-commercial event, or if it's a short-term event that doesn't have any food trucks at it. And when I say short-term, generally, a, a, a day. They don't have to get a permit. But for any other type of event, any event over, over a day long, any event that has a food truck at it, any event that, um, i- is on a commercial property, has to get a permit. And if you're a food truck and you wanna operate in the city, you are only allowed to operate at an event that has got a permit. And so food truck operator wanting to, uh, uh, wanting to set up can only do it at an event, and they gotta come into our office, apply for a business license, and also apply for their food truck permit. And there's a lot of documents and materials that they have to submit in order for them to be able to get a license to open up as a food truck. Some of the things that they have to bring in is kind of a little overboard. We make them take pictures of themselves, we make them take pictures of their food truck, we make them get a, a ten-year driving record, we make them get a ten-year criminal record. And, and there's a few other things on top of that that they have to do in order to be licensed as a food truck. For a lot of them, it's a lot of work, especially if you've been, you know, if you've moved in the last few years to try to track down a driving record or, or criminal record from another state. Sometimes be challenging, and, and, um, so we approached this ordinance from the standpoint of trying to make things a little easier. And, uh, this approach we've taken really is, is fourfold that I have shown on the screen right here. First off is, the ordinance provides some general standards that apply to all temporary uses and structures. This would be things like, um, making sure that they have property owner permission where they're sitting up, make sure they get any permits or license that they're required by law or ordinance to get, making sure that they, um, don't make any permanent alterations to the site, that they follow temporary signage standards, that they, um, if they have any utility connections, they do those in the right way, that they still have parking available on the sites where they're setting up, that there are restrooms available, that they collect and dispose of their trash appropriately. So, um, those are some of the general standards that are in this draft ordinance that apply to all temporary uses and structures. Secondly, it identifies some temporary uses and structures that are allowed and are exempt from having to get a permit. And I'll go over those in just a second. Well, actually, let me cover those right now. So some of the, the events that we would be looking at to make exempt from having to get a permit, they still have to follow the general standards, but they would be exempt from having to get a permit from the city is outdoor promotional events, as long as it's less than two hundred attendees and no more than two consecutive days. Any private events that are close to the public, any events that are sponsored or hosted by the city of Malden, any events at churches, sports facilities, schools, auditoriums, and similar places of assembly, and those places generally are, are designed to handle large crowds anyways. Events at common areas and residential neighborhoods, because we get those from time to time. Events at Bridgeway Station, because that's turning into its own animal out there, where, uh, it's, they have an outdoor plaza that is specifically designed for the purpose of having events and gatherings. And then, uh, similar to we are, how we already do garage sales and yard sales at residences, those would be exempt as well. These are the type of events that we find happen in the city most commonly. So, um, we've never had any issues with these types of events that we've been allowing, and I think our thought is to make it exempt from a permit. We just, we don't need to be in the business of, of getting these applications when it's never happened really on these type of events where we've denied their permit. The third aspect of this approach is that we've taken is to identify temporary uses and structures that are allowed by permit. And really, that just covers mainly two things, covers events that were not, have not been listed as exempt. Maybe it's an event that has more than two hundred people, or maybe it's an event that's gonna be longer than two days. And then the other thing that require, would require event is we have some seasonal outdoor sales from time to time in the city, maybe someone selling Christmas trees or pumpkins. And so we would require a permit for that, like we have been doing. And then the fourth aspect of this approach is to specify a brief set of standards for mobile food sales, food trucks. And, and that's what we've covered in the last section of this ordinance. And our current ordinance, there's a whole laundry list of things that apply to food trucks, and we've really just tried to condense it down and make it simpler and easier to follow. So instead of the umpteen, uh, regulations we've had listed in our current ordinance, we've narrowed it down to six. We have six standards for food trucks to follow here in addition to the, um, general set of standards that apply to all temporary uses and structures. Now, hot off the press today, this has gone, uh, we got the review back from our city attorney. So at your, at your spot there, you should have a, a document that I handed out that has some red marks on it. The red marks are the comments we've got back from our attorney, some modifications he suggested. So let me just touch on those real quick. You'll notice on the first page that, um, there's a typo he caught where I listed the same where as statement twice, so we'll strike the extra one of those. On the third page, uh, under the general standards that apply to all temporary uses and structures, he added a clause under, um, the fifth, on their item B, and where we talk about that, um, if someone's operating a temporary user structure and they need to get their appropriate permits and licenses that might apply, including a Malden business license, he just added in there, um, where applicable pursuant to chapter ten, article two of the Malden Code of Ordinances. Think it's just, uh, an attorney provision, or council provision he's adding in there to make sure that we got ourselves covered on what we're referring to. Under item L of that same section, um, this was a good catch on his part, because we talk about operating hours for temporary uses and structures. And if it's within a five hundred feet of a residential a- area, one of the general standards is, is to help protect that residential area from any noise or activity that takes place into the wee hours of the night. So, um, we had in there that any, uh, temporary use or structure within five hundred feet of a residential use would have to stop no later than ten P M. Well, so he, in his wisdom, has added also a starting point on there, which is, is good, we need that. So he added in there that also they can't begin earlier than seven P M. The next change that he has recommended is under seven thirty, three point five. He added a word at the beginning of that section to say certain temporary uses and structures exempted from permit requirements. And then just a couple of tou- touch-ups on the first paragraph under that section. So it's just some, um, clarifications and grammatical items, and also adding, uh, make sure we add hospitality taxes as some of the, uh, things that the exemption does not preclude them from being subject to. The next section that he, uh, modified is at the bottom of page six, start, and then goes on to the top of page seven. This is under the temporary uses and structures that are allowed by a permit. First of all, he fixed the grammatical error on my part. It had said on there, two or more consecutive days, but in this part, we actually mean more than two consecutive days. So he caught that for me. But then also, under the standards that they need to adhere to, he provided a little bit more, um, clarification on the type of liability insurance that would be required for a large event like this. And then the last, uh, modification he made is under the mobile food sales section, um, under the standards that are listed there, number, standard number two refers to Malden business licenses. And so he, he had a little clarification or addition at the end of that clause, specifying some of the documents that we would require them to submit as part of their application for a business license. We include their driver's license, vehicle registration, and proof of insurance, really, which those should be simple enough, and I think are reasonable for the type of application that is, so.
I think you're seeing many more food trucks. And I was gonna ask you, the cultural center, I noticed in the mornings, is a tr- truck with a trailer, behind it, a airstream trailer. I guess they have to have a permit also, right?
Well, um, that one at the cultural center, if you're talking about the one for coffee. Yeah, they've, are there at the invitation of the cultural center staff. So they've been operating as an event on city property, which is why they've been able to. They need to have a business license, but they've not been required a permit for that.
This one, and, but for the summer, the beach music things, where we have food trucks, kinda make it easier for them, but they have to have a business license and permit.
That's the main thing, they would just need to have a business license and have the permission of the cultural center staff to be there if they're operating an event like that. So really, at the end of the day, what this ordinance does is, uh, it pulls back all the re- a lot of the requirements we had for events, not, and, and pulls back in the sense that we don't require permits for nearly as many events as we've been doing. And for a food truck, um, the main thing there is as long as they are operating at an appropriate event, whether it's an exempt per event or at a permanent event, that's where they're allowed to operate. But as long as they're operating at one of those two types of activities, then all they need is a business license. What this ordinance does not do, it does not allow a food truck to just go park on the corner somewhere and be there for days and weeks on end. This ordinance does not necessarily allow that. I think the reason for that is there's some level of protection we wanna give to our brick and mortars to make sure that they are successful, but it allows food trucks to still come in and, um, at different events or promotional things going on to set up from time to time and, uh, for it to be a positive, fun experience for the residents.
Hey, we had a problem in the past with them showing up and just pulling up on the corner and doing that.
Not very much that I can think of. We've had one or two where we wondered, uh, we said, hey, you got a food truck parked out there. It's been out there for a few days, are you operating out of it? More often than not, we found out that, no, they're not operating, it's just parked there. But, um, we haven't, I, I can't recall us really running into this issue too much so far. So that's my introduction and, and overview of this ordinance that you have before you. Certainly, uh, I'm open to any comments and revisions that you might like to recommend or discuss. And, um, and, uh, if at the end of the meeting, you're at a place where you feel good about where this ordinance is at, at that time, it would certainly be appropriate to recommend this be moved up to the city council for their consideration.
Any of the commission, do you have questions for David, or any discussion you wanna go into?
I just wanted a clarification regarding, so currently, we have, the ordinance is set up with the following restrictions for food trucks. One of those is setting up within two hundred and fifty feet of a restaurant without that restaurant's permission. Are we eliminating all of these requirements? We're simplifying, I understand that.
Yes, all those requirements, except for what's been left, uh, in the last section, have been eliminated. And honestly, one of the things we found with that requirement, all the restaurants usually signed off and gave permission on that anyways. I don't think I can think of a single one who said no. So what we've found is it seems like the brick and mortar restaurants are generally okay when the food truck comes maybe to a neighboring property, as long as they're only there for a day or two.
Well, I know in some uni- other municipalities, they've struggled where they're there more than a couple of days, because they feel like they're taking away business from the brick and mortars. But I think the way this is written, I think, two days max is kind of, is that my understanding? I, I personally don't think there would be an issue if it's limited to two days.
Any other questions, or?
Yeah, I've got a, a couple of things I just wanted to ask. There's a, a good list of requirements for the food trucks and other things for the non-permitted events, but particularly the food trucks. I guess one of the questions I've got is, if the event's not permitted, how do you enforce that they're abiding by those regulations?
So the main thing there will just be that, um, it, it will become a point as to whether they've been out there for more than a couple of days. What we're finding right now, actually, is it's been difficult to enforce the way it is. A lot of times, food, you know, food truck may come in, and by the time we catch wind of it, they're usually gone. So the way this is set up is not necessarily meant to penalize or ha- or require that we go out and enforce on someone who's just there a day or two, and normally don't, we don't catch anyways. This is more set up to enforce on the guy who's just parked out there for multiple days. And, um, those ones we can get, uh, usually follow up with a lot easier.
Oh, I, I guess it's just a matter of no one complaining or no one stopping to check or anything like that?
No, we definitely have employees and officers who, uh, who notice these things. So it, you know, where it will become noticeable is when they've been out there for more than a couple of days. And that's, that's one we'll, we'll follow up on enforcement.
And, and a clarification, the sales duration for a construction site is two hours. But there's no other limitation on other events besides the seven to ten.
Yeah, we, um, on construction sites, we don't get this very often, but once in a while, you might have, uh, someone who wants to bring in a food truck for the construction workers to eat. So it's, that's been set up with a limitation on two hours, so it covers them for that lunch hour. But at the same time, doesn't create the appearance that this is a food truck setting out there for just anyone to stop by and come to. That's, that's why you have the, uh, separate, uh, time limitation there at the construction site, so that they're not out there so long that they start to attract the public interest, and you got people pulling in from the street to come, uh, onto this construction.
You still have to have a business license.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and, um, I guess one of the other questions I had, have you ever had much of an issue? Because you do have requirements as far as having a proper amount of parking, and they've got to be within X number of feet of a restroom. Has that ever been an issue? Because I can see, depending on where they pull up, that that could certainly be a potential. You know, particularly for parking and, and they're attracting people during lunchtime and supper time, and, you know. Has that ever been an issue?
Not really, um, the only issue we really run into parking is when it's for a large event. Now, we've had parking issues in the city, but most of the time we've run into parking issues in the city have been, or businesses, actually. Y'all are familiar with, uh, former nightclub we had up here on North Main, and certainly we had a lot of parking issues related to that, but that was part of the business. The one area, uh, we have another business on Murray, we run into some parking challenges from time to time at, at the dog bar. And, and sometimes they hold events out there, too. One of the requirements that's in here is, um, that there does need to be adequate parking. That's included in the general standards for all temporary uses and structures. So, um, you know, i- i- if we get into some of these that are exempt from a permit that we start seeing some parking issues with, that's one where we'll probably follow up with that business owner, like, you know, if it was the dog bar, for example, and say, hey, listen, we've gotta, we gotta have, have you help us here work out some parking agreements, which is what we've actually done with them, uh, recently in the past. So they've gone out, talked to their neighbors, gotten agreements for their customers, especially when they're holding some of these events, to park on their properties. And I think that's worked out pretty good. That's been probably the most we've really experienced on the parking side. I haven't seen too many other issues besides that. And then on the restrooms, typically what we see with these is we're primarily only allowing them where there's existing businesses. So we just make sure that they have access to the restaurants and the business on that property. And that's worked out pretty good.
You mentioned the word adequate, is there a legal definition for what adequate is?
So we typically fall back to the parking that's required in our ordinance. But then, uh, what we look at is we look at what's the required reco- uh, parking required for their business at their property. And then we then on top of that kinda do some loose calculations on the number of people that they expect are gonna come and attend event, an event. And, um, this would be what we would look at doing if it was a large event, uh, where they need a permit. We would take a look at what's the bus- required parking at their property for their business, and then what's gonna be the required parking for the event they're bringing in. That's what we'd sort out.
Say, there is a required parking.
Mm-hmm.
Amount, but, you know, like you said, for events, different.
Yeah, we still do have some stuff in our, in our ordinance that, uh, addresses assemblies and, and events, so we, we can use that standard.
Well, trust me, I'm, I'm happy to see you make it a little easier for, for them or present it to be a little easier should it pass.
The last question I had, I really was a head-scratcher. I didn't really understand the, under the events exempt from permit, uh, requirements, you've got a good list of, you know, those events. The last one says portable storage containers. And then, under the mobile food sales, it says that they're only allowed to set up and operate under the activities in seven point three point five. So could somebody, in theory, put a portable storage container out somewhere and then pull a food truck up beside it?
No, that's not the intent, see where you're going with that, though. We certainly could add, uh, a clarification under.
That needs to be taken.
Seven three seven, that, that clarifies that, uh, portable storage containers are not included in the list of activities for mobile food.
Yeah, I was thinking that might be a good.
Yeah.
Good idea, because I can see somebody trying to get away from getting a permit, and they, and they find that, oh, man, we can pull this storage container up here for whatever, six months, and every day we can have a different food truck come in and set up beside.
That section on the portable storage containers is really for storage containers that someone brings out to their home.
I understand.
So, but I hear where you're going, so, yeah, we, we can definitely add some clarifying language there.
No. We got one here, I'm an engineer.
Any other discussion, you got any more questions?
That's. I, I do have a few questions. It talks about obtaining permission, written permission, from the landowner. I would assume a, a, a lot of these places that, particularly food trucks and things like that, would be, be commercial locations rather than residential. Am I, would, would someone be, um, able to rely? If, uh, if it's an LLC, I won't necessarily know who the members are. I'll be able to rely on the signature of whoever signed the written document, or do I need a co- company resolution?
So generally, what we do with an LLC is we look up on the Secretary of State's site to see who the registered agent is, and that's typically what we request is that they get the signature of that registered agent.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, and I was looking at the temporary uses when it's the seasonal sales. And I, and I'm thinking in particular, over near where I live, I think it's the. Church of God. Home. Um every year, they have a at least a Christmas tree sale.
Oh, I did not know about that.
Um so and it says not allowed at residence. I wasn't sure if, because it's the Church of God Children's Home, if they're exempt under the places of worship or?
Yeah, that's probably how we would treat that. We would exempt them under a place of worship. Um because I had in mind the same thing to do with pumpkin sales over here at the Methodist Church. Um because it's on a church property, just exempting them uh because they're exempt under that provision. I would do the same for that as well.
Okay.
Mainly, the main one that I'm expecting, which they get a permit every year, is the Granddaddy's Trees out at the end of East Butler Road. They set up a lot there. They get a permit every year, so this would really not change for them. But that was the only one I was really thinking in my head that I would still expect a permit for.
Any other questions, Lon?
Came up that um they're able to set up within five hundred feet of a residence and the operating hours are seven A M to ten P M. Right, is that, I mean, I don't know, seems to be a little long.
So the uh the reason that those hours were selected was because that coordinates with the noise ordinance that the city has. So that's where those those hours come from, is because they're the same hours that are listed there.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify the parking. Um and it said, you said you would fall back to standards that were listed elsewhere.
Yeah, we have a whole chapter on parking in the zoning ordinance, so we would use those standards.
Any other questions?
Um, just if I may, I thought everything seemed quite well written. I know that we have a food truck that comes in to our neighborhood clubhouse regularly. Um I, hopefully, they've been doing it with permission. Um David, would you say in general uh that the licensing and regulatory burden on brick and mortar restaurants and food trucks are at least reasonably equivalent? Um, you know, with this ordinance change and um just the the stuff we already have on the books?
Yeah, I would say they are, because for a brick and mortar restaurant, let's say uh let's say a restaurant goes empty and someone's looking to move into it, it's really the same process what they're applying for as well. They're at the end of the day is applying for a business license. There's a tenant occupancy permit attached to that, but the form they're filling out is the business license. That will be the same form that or the identic- the comparable form, I should say, that a food truck is going to use. Uh at the end of the day, they're looking at a very similar process.
Okay, just wanted to be sure we weren't creating a situation where one was easier than the other. Um, thank you.
Any other questions, Jonathan?
No, no, not at all. The rest of it, I mean, I I think it's really great. I think it's good that we're making things easier for um these types of events. I was just at the uh five K run in downtown Greenville on Saturday, which is where I got sick, I think. And uh you know, that these things are great, a lot of people come out to get to see all your friends, builds a community. So anything we can do to make this easier, I'm 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 in favor of.
Thank you.
Any discussion between mission? I'll, if there is none, I'll go ahead and open the floor. If there's anyone that would like to say anything, speak. Now or forever, hold you, okay? If you if you would come speak in our microphone.
If it's about Ashmore Bridge Road, maybe we could talk about that after we're done with this one, okay? Generally, if if uh if they want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, we'll talk with them about that after the meeting.
After after the meeting, because it's not on the docket.
Right, right.
No more discussion, eh then no one, nobody, no one else to to uh speak. I'll go ahead and ask, are we ready for a motion? Maybe we've had a motion by Mr. Dan Chisholm to accept approval.
Re- recommend approval is.
Recommend approval.
Yep.
Second, seconded by Kevin Green. Is no discussion, let's, all those in favor, vote, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't see Lion, I can't see. Okay, is unanimous. The recommendation was made to city council that we approve uh docket P C dash two oh two four dash zero one dash C A. Other business?
There's no other business.
There's no other business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Well, before we do that, let me just say, Jonathan, hope you uh get better. And we miss you tonight, but we're glad to have you on on uh video. But uh hope you feel better and get well soon. And we'll ask everyone to please be thinking of Chanceling, Hot Blair, she's in the hospital at her David, and she's having some some issues, so let's be in prayer for her as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin Greens made the motion adjourned.
That was actually Mr. Bixler.
Excuse me, Lion made the motion. I can't see him for this whole thing. Mr. Bixler made the motion to adjourn, to air second, second, Mr. Green seconded. Therefore, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Randy, thanks so much for running the meeting for me.
See you, Jonathan. Take care.